Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmonsburg Town Meeting for the night of Monday, February 12. As we begin our meeting, I kindly request that everyone please silence or turn off your cell phones to minimize disruptions to in respect of the decorum of the meeting. Additionally, I ask for your cooperation in maintaining a quiet atmosphere during the meeting so everybody can hear each other and attend to the subject matter at hand. At this time, I invite you to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Okay, future meetings include Parks Committee on February 13th at 7:30 in the Town Office, Planning Commission Meeting, February 19th, 7 o'clock at Town in the Town Office and on Zoom, Comprehensive Plan Workshop, February 26th at 7 o'clock in the Town Office and on Zoom, Board of Commissioners Meeting is after this one is March 4th at 7:00 PM at here in the Town Office and on Zoom. And with that.
Commissioner, I do have one, oh, one meeting to add, I'm sorry. We just found out about it, the Sustainable Communities Work Group will be will be meeting on February 20th at 7:00 PM here in the Town Office to review the community legacy applications.
Do you have a time on that?
Uh, 7:00 PM.
Did you say that?
I don't know.
I don't know either. I'm really tired. Thank you. And did we by any chance get anybody else interested in joining that committee?
We do have, actually, I added her to the agenda this month. Sweet. For for today, we still have one more opening.
Okay, great. One more opening. All right, thank you very much. From there, we move on to Commissioner comments. Just in the interest of time, if commissioners, if you want to raise your hand, if you have comments to make. Otherwise, we. Good, good, good. The only one comment I had was that I did get a concern from a resident about the lighting at outside of rudders at that second. The second place you can turn out, I guess it's very dark there. I don't know that this is a town matter, but I didn't know if there was a way to reach out to inquire with rudders.
I did reach out to State Highway to see if we could get a light put in there right after they opened.
Oh, perfect.
I haven't been in contact with them recently, but we will.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Turning to Mayor's comments.
Real quick, because I got some good stuff. That's if it was bad stuff, we'd save it. But the, starting the 11th of March, the office will be open from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM to allow more time for residents to to be able to get into the office, to get their permits and their bills paid and what have you. So it's it's a, we're gonna do that on a six-month trial and see how it works out for the citizens and for the staff. We're gonna be changing some staff work hours. But it's the big thing is to have it for the citizens to be able to get in here. So we'll see how that works out. The bids for the DePaul Street Water Line came in. And if everything holds up, the low bid came in under budget, so that will give us some more ARPA money to work on some of our other projects. So we'll have more details at the March meeting, but we will have some ARPA money that we have to use up by June, correct?
We have to have a contract.
Contracted in by June, so there could be some more projects we can get. So that's a good thing. And the last thing, this wasn't really good, but we got a an email from the county last week, late last week about our backflow preventers cross connections. All of a sudden, Frederick County wants to be involved in this project. So they can charge for a permit. So Friday, I sent off an email to both Mason Carter on the County Council for our representative from this area and also to the County Executive's Office, not not to the County Executive, but to Devin, who was here at the meeting a couple of months ago, got responses back from both. We have a meeting set up the end of February with the Permits Department, but I've talked to several plumbers over the weekend. They see no reason for a permit and or an inspection because there's no way to test this valve to see if it's working. It's just they come in, they stick it in the line and it's done. So I'll keep you posted on that, but I just see it as a money grab for the county.
Can I clarify? When you said the county wants to be involved, they want to add another permit on, okay.
Yeah, they want to have to issue a Frederick County permit, plus they will charge for an inspection. So so we're gonna fight that one.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. All right, from there, we're moving on to administrative business, which there is none. So we're going on to consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda, and that's for consideration approval of Leslie Frye. Is it Frey or Frye? Frye? Frey? Gosh, if she's watching, I'm sorry. To the Sustainable Communities Work Group with a term of February 12th, 2024 to February 12th, 2029. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Sweeting, seconded by Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-2-0 with all commissioners present. Did I skip that?
Yes.
I did. No, we don't have any public comments. Look. Just for everybody to see, this probably once in a lifetime event that we have no public comment. Thank you. I it's very unusual. Thank you for pointing that out. I apologize if skipped over that. I guess it was my excitement. Treasurers report, we have none. Planning Commission report. No, I don't think we have one attached. So moving on to our agenda items. We have two agenda items. The first one is for consideration approval of the updated rules of procedure for Board of Commissioner meetings to include provisions for closed meetings, workshops, et cetera. Do you want to start us off?
I will. Yeah, I'll start us off. I am going to take the podium just because I liked it last week. All right, so I'm going to report on the homework that you gave me at the last meeting. I'm going to offer one additional thought that I had about these rules for your consideration, and then I'll answer any additional questions you have and leave it to you to approve them or not. So with respect to the questions that I came out of here with last week, the issue of whether or not a commissioner should or it's appropriate to leave the meeting room in the event there is a conflict of interest. So it was, as I suspected, there's not a hard and fast rule either way. No reason, nothing that says you can't ask commissioners to leave or agree that commissioners will leave, nothing that says they have to leave. It's purely your discretion. And again, just to reiterate the conversation we had last week, my recommendation would be, yes, it's a good idea to have them leave just because, you know, if there is a conflict of interest, the remaining commissioners will probably feel more free to speak on the issue. There's not any issue of, you know, the person sitting in the back shooting lasers out of their eyes. But again, completely your discretion, whether you want to take that suggestion or leave it. And then with respect to the additional closed meeting items, I did add two exhibits. There's a script for the president to read with the closing statement that I think is it should be helpful and hopefully it's helpful later tonight. And I also included an exhibit with a sample of what the the statement that goes with the minutes summarizing what happened in closed session. I get those are the only things I could think of that were conducive to sort of a template format example type item. And I think that carries us through most of the way. So then the other thing, and I do apologize because this and the red line that you have, it's the same red line that you looked at last week with the exception of I did add those two additional exhibits as exhibit B and exhibit C. The one thing I did not include, because I didn't think of it on Thursday when I submitted this, I thought about it over the weekend and I thought about it a little bit more this morning. Coming off a comment the Commissioner Hoover had last week about Roberts rules and how, you know, if we're if we're gonna go with this, it says 3.11, except as otherwise provided for in these rules, Robert rules shall control. And I believe Commissioner Hoover comment was something along the lines of, you know, we don't really keep to that right now, so that's gonna require a little change. And on the one hand, I'm an attorney. I like rules. I like procedure. But on the other hand, I don't want to unnecessarily gum up the business that the commissioners are trying to accomplish with having to flip through this or something similar every time anyone wants to do anything, right? I don't want this to turn into a nitpicking session. So my suggestion would be to modify that a bit such that Robert's rules turns into a tiebreaker. So the way it would work is first order of business, what do these rules that you're voting on say that controls? If these rules are silent and an issue of procedure is raised, I would say first, commissioners should try to attempt to agree as to how to proceed, right? And then if the majority of commissioners cannot agree, Roberts is the tiebreaker. And again, I I'm trying just to to keep things moving and keep it from turning into a parliamentary procedure festival up here, so you guys can actually do what you need to do. So that's my intent. I will read. If if you want me to, I have proposed language that I can read for your consideration if we want to make this amendment right now, rather than having to kick the can down the road again.
Is that not currently included?
It's not currently in here because I
Sure.
I gave these to Ms. Willetts on Thursday to get in the agenda packet, and I thought about it more over the weekend because that's just sometimes when things come to me. So.
I think it's worth hearing.
Yeah, so my proposed revision that would replace 3.11 in its entirety. If a question of procedure arises, which these rules do not address, and a majority of commissioners cannot agree as to how the board should proceed, the most up-to-date version of Robert's Rules of Order shall control. And I can say that again. If a question of procedure arises, which these rules do not address, and a majority of commissioners cannot agree as to how the board should proceed, the most up-to-date version of Robert's Rules of Order shall control. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer questions about that or any additional questions that have come up about the rules in general since our last meeting.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Hoover?
So so I like I like that change.
Okay.
The only the only pickup there, I guess, is the most current up-to-date Robert's rules, and then we'd have to make sure we had that
Correct.
copy.
Yes.
Here and available.
That's right.
When and if such a time comes and I have a dispute of which one's the most current book.
That's right.
So but I do like that update to where you know, we're back to the council making it just like it's doing, making
Right.
The procedural rules. So from that, I do like to that.
Thank you.
Other comments on that added statement?
Okay. I don't like it. And I'll tell you why.
Please.
All of the rules that we've added in here from probably 3.10 on about motions and how to make a second and during discussion what we're allowed to do and so on and so forth. That all comes from Robert's rules.
It does.
So basically, we're picking and choosing what we want to pull from Robert's rules to put in the policy.
Yes.
And then to say, we'll figure everything else out. Or result to Robert's rules if we can't come to a consensus. I mean, when Leslie was Mrs. Powell was here, you know, in the past discussing our board meeting, she had suggested that we follow Robert's rules. So I say, I think we should follow them or not follow them. You know, it's good guidance. You know, recently we talked about our minutes and what should be included in the minutes based on what Robert's rule says. So I mean, I like the idea of having having a set of guidelines that we can follow when we're lost. And if we're gonna not include that, then we may want to revisit what we have pulled out from Robert's rules to see if there's anything else that we want to put in our policy.
I I hear that, I guess, by way of response, I would say that, yes, we are picking and choosing here, and I would say that the things that have been included are the most relevant, the most likely to come up from Robert's rules, the most applicable to the board's proceedings. And and I'll also share that, yes, we have we have expressed in the past, I know Ms. Powell has, you know, that that it's a good idea to have rules in place and Robert's rules is is a good thing to have in place. I mean, I'll also share that this wasn't just a idea I came up with on a on a whim on my way up here. I did talk about this with her this morning, and she did agree that, you know, maybe my proposed suggestion would would have some merit here. But I I hear I hear your concern and I hear.
If I can chime in on that, Commissioner Turquess, the way I, excuse me, I interpreted what what he just read. Because the way it stands right now, 3.11, except as otherwise provided for in these rules, Robert's Rules of Order revised shall control the procedure of the board's meeting. So I'm with Commissioner Hoover saying sometimes it doesn't quite go that way. So we can have the flexibility to refer back to Robert's rules, not necessarily on how we vote, because I feel like we know the procedure to vote, but what happens if a motion dies? Then what? Remember, there was one where we're like, okay, it died down. What do we do? And we're all looking at each other. I think that's what we mean is what do what do we do if we don't know how to proceed on a particular agenda item? I do think there is some merit to following Robert's rules and saying, you know, let's make a motion and then move to discussion. Commissioner Hoover says we try that in the last few months, so I think this just points you in the right in the direction of remember you can refer to Robert's rules if if needed. If you don't know what to do, I don't think it's like I think that it reads like a suggestion to me.
Well, I don't know that I would go so far as to say it's a suggestion. I mean, this this is contemplating, again, first and foremost, your rules of procedure as adopted will will control, and the ideas I've I attempted to put all of the important things in here so that you you do have agreement in advance as to how you're going to proceed. What this is really trying to do is to provide some flexibility in some more obscure situations that are not already covered here. And if there's a way that the board as a board can agree to move forward in those cases, that's what we're gonna go with. And if they can't, this is, you know, Roberts is still here. It's still a fallback if there's if something slips through the cracks. Because that really is what this is supposed to be. This provision is supposed to be a backstop and a catch-all in the extraordinary case where you run into a problem. It's not talked about here, and you don't know what to do. So I I don't know if I would
It's not a suggestion.
Say it's just a suggestion. This is this is now itself a procedure, right? So this the procedure is look at our rules, try to find consensus. If no if no rule and no consensus, then we turn to Roberts to figure it out.
So then I have a silly question. Is that really any different than what stated already?
Yes, what's stated already would have you run immediately to Roberts. So any procedural question that you don't know the answer to that is not covered in here, you you gotta go to Roberts it to the extent that someone's contesting it, right? Because I, you know, theoretically, the board could do something inappropriately. If if no one is there to say, hey, wait a minute, then you're just gonna do it and move on, right? But to the extent there's an an issue that comes up, there's no maneuver, you know, maneuvering around, and I maneuvering is maybe not the best word because this isn't supposed to be something sinister. It's not like the board is trying to pull one over on people. It really is just about efficiency and trying to keep things going without turning one turning everyone or requiring that everyone is an expert in Robert's rules because there are a lot of Robert's rules. But in the event that you can't figure out where to go, it's still there. That's that's the thought.
Commissioner Turquess to you or Commissioner Hoover? Or anyone? Additional thoughts, questions? After clarification.
No, still good.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Sure, not a question, just a comment. Thank you. This is appreciated. In my perspective, and I'm just sharing just for an opinion, I view the meeting as a place where we bring information forward and we take care of decision-making. Sometimes we need information in meetings. Oftentimes, we come to meetings with that information in place after interacting with staff. The efficiency is an important thing to all of us. We don't want to get bogged down, and I think that's kind of where you're coming from. You want us to have a always have a clear course of action. I feel that the framework that we have is functional and useful. However, it is is also useful to have that safety net of Robert's rules. I like the concept of the tiebreaker. I feel that if we're bound to it, it will be very limiting. And the other piece I would humbly suggest is maybe we contact our good friends, and I'm saying it again, at MML and ask this to be one of their workshops this summer, so we can see their their framework for the application of Robert's rules. So just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you. That's a good idea. I I think that comes back to something that we mentioned in the last meeting about, you know, maybe we want to look at a refresher on Robert's rules. I think there was interest in that. Did we have additional feedback? As of of this document?
Yeah, open season, whatever you want.
I do.
Commissioner Hoover?
Well, I mean, it's not really different because the same same as last last meeting.
Sure.
So my my question would be 3.6. As a commissioner who disqualifies him or her shell from the agenda item pursuant to town code ethics, blah, blah, shall exit, so exit the room. I don't still don't agree that they should. If it's an open public meeting, I don't feel that they should have to exit the room because if it was a citizen making the same, I don't know, concerns, comment, or looking for the the agenda item, not even like the fish, we are, we are all citizens, they they would still be sitting in the audience. So so if I if I'm disqualifying myself from something here, I guess then my my family members could sit out here, but I couldn't. I just, I don't believe they should. If it's a if it's an open public meeting, I don't believe they should be disqualified. So and again, that's I don't know how you want to make motions on everything on one by one or or go through. I don't know, but but you know.
Do we have comment from other commissioners about exiting the room? Or right, do we make? How do we?
Like an amendment, it'd be no number by number or whatever.
And we could.
I'll make my motion. You can see if they die or fail or whatever, and then that's
I mean, we can.
It's the board's decision, so.
It is. And you won't hurt my feelings.
I agree with not exiting the room. I did look to see what other towns and municipalities do. And they do all sorts of things, right? So there's, like you said, no hard and fast rule. It was pretty consistent in a closed meeting. If it was disciplinary or there's a complaint against somebody to definitely leave the room because you won't be able to have that open discussion. But if it's a public meeting and it's a topic that's not disciplinary or complaint in nature, then it seems as if there were municipalities that let the commissioners excuse themselves and sit in the audience. So that was, I agree with Commissioner Hoover on that. I like that idea. Unless it's something that directly pertains to that commissioner. Thoughts from the others?
I'm sorry. It's an old day, in the old, I said, old days. We did leave the room, I believe, but then we, Jim, I think I left the room once, twice.
And I can't recall anybody being told to leave the room. I'm not gonna say it didn't happen, but I don't recall anybody ever leaving.
I think we left on our own.
If it was closed session, yes, but not public.
But I don't have a problem with the person staying in the room unless it's discipline, just for them. I don't have a problem.
Commissioner Turquess or Commissioner O'Donnell, thoughts?
I I don't have a problem with Commissioner Hoover's suggestion to stay in the room.
So how would we?
So my suggestion, depending on how many amendments we want to make, if there's general consensus about the amendments, I I think it might be helpful to make. Now, this this might not work if if we're gonna, their disagreement about different amendments, we might have to abandon this, but I would suggest figure out what you want the amendments to be, make a motion, I move to adopt the rules of procedure as presented with the following amendments, rattle them off, vote on that. If we can do it, if that's not gonna happen, we'll come ahead a different way.
Let me go through my comments when we're found out.
Gotcha.
And and that same issue is in there in a couple of different.
Multiple places, yes.
So I'm talking about all of them.
Yep.
Workshop, section five, 5.3 says that a quorum is not is not required. I believe a quorum should always be required. I call a meeting of any sort. It should always be a quorum.
Commissioners feedback on 5.3. Commissioner Hoover is requesting that a quorum is required for a workshop.
I I agree.
Mr. Hoover, could you repeat why you think that should be an issue regarding requiring a quorum?
Well, typically, you're not going to make motions or or whatever, but you may be given staff direction. And so the council up here, there's only two members up here and three are absent because that would be the only way to not have a quorum. The direction given to staff may not be the favorable to others, but but as you know, as a as a body, we're supposed to meet in public as as a quorum or better.
So I guess the question I'll have then is is the board, I guess here is where my my understanding of a workshop is its presentation of information. It's helpful in making decisions, but typically I don't see us necessarily always giving direction to staff. And therefore, if we don't have a quorum, are we capable of giving direction to staff?
It's a good question.
And I don't think that we are. So if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a position to direct staff. So therefore.
Why are we having a meeting?
I think if, for example, we scheduled something and we have a speaker who has an important topic, they need to put information forward. We're trying to inform the board, and the assumption is that board members who can attend have a good cause to not be there. But they also have the responsibility of finding the information, like learning what was said there, like reviewing the transcript or whatnot. But I don't think the board is limited from having a workshop. I just don't think we can give direction to staff without quorum. That's kind of my spin on it, but maybe we add language to that effect. And therefore, perhaps we could have a quorum because I didn't see that in the the quick spin I took on this one. So if it's there, I've missed it.
What are the official rules for workshops, quorums?
So, well, there aren't really official rules for workshops. Quorum, the the rule for quorum is that the The, the rule for quorum is that the body cannot take action if there is not a quorum. So it's a good question as to whether, whether directing staff is taking action per se. I, I could see an argument that it is.
Definitely.
Also, I will, I will just add, I I personally, I, I drafted these and I, um, I was trying to make workshops easier, but I'm not, I would not die on this hill personally if the board has reservations. I mean, there are, I can't contemplate too many situations where you're not going to have a quorum um, for a workshop anyway. So I
I would agree.
I, I will put that forward if it helps the conversation.
I mean, to not have a quorum, three people had to be absent.
Correct.
So hopefully.
Something's going on.
Right. And I look at um, workshops. The way, the way we have started using them is, is a work session for the council to talk and do so in a public setting, like you said, not necessarily making motions and giving direction to the staff, but it's our chance to come together and work as a team. So I would prefer that a quorum is required for a workshop because that's your, that's the meat of what we're trying to accomplish and discuss. It's just another form for it. Commissioner Sweeney, you said I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Turnquist or Commissioner O'Donnell?
I agree.
Okay.
Next.
Yes.
Five point four. Uh, says here that the board, uh, it does say we have to do a recording of the workshop. Um, which should be the official record, but it also says the board need not prepare minutes for a workshop. And I believe we should, and I also believe there should be minutes provided. Should be like any other meeting where minutes are docu- created and documented and available.
I'll, I'll give you, I mean, I think I gave this explanation last week, but um, it really depends on what the board is going to do with minutes, because if minutes are just more record of the actions taken, there aren't going to be actions taken at a workshop and you do have the recording. I mean, as far as the Maryland state law is concerned with minutes, technically speaking, if you have a recording of the meeting, you don't have to prepare minutes. Um, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's how it should be done. I'm just from a purely legal perspective. Um, but again, this is, this is another one of those things that I put it in there because I thought it would, again, just make the process of workshops a bit more straightforward. But it is, once again, not a hill I would, so to speak, die on.
Agreed, agreed.
Additional comments on that, commissioners?
I like the idea of minutes. It often includes um, someone mentioned direction or even action items. You know, and, and it's a good reference point for, you know, what we talked about in terms of, you know, moving to the next workshop or continuing the discussion on, on that particular item. So I like the idea of having minutes.
Anyone else?
I don't have, I must keep those. I think this should be kept too.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Good. I'm, I'm okay with keeping the minutes as well. E- even if it's just bullet points of main topics discussed. Just for easy reference. Excellent.
Next.
Oh, you're, you're done?
I'm not done.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Yeah, next.
Five point six is the same thing we already discussed about, about the person leaving the room.
Already got that.
And if it's, again, if it's a public meeting, should not have to leave the room. Five point seven. It says there the board shall not accept public comments. And I know we don't, we don't, but I just think the shall should be a may.
Oh, so the board.
To give the board the discretion as to whether or not to accept a comment at a workshop or not.
We may never use the option, but it just started, as he said, it gives us the discretion if for some reason or you know.
You want to, words that.
Right.
Commissioners? We're good with that? Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Sweeney? Okay, that works. Next one? That's it.
A lot of marks I got. I think I got, I think I covered everything for last meeting.
Yep.
No, no, come back. I don't have any.
You don't have any, Commissioner um, O'Donnell or Commissioner Turnquist?
I, I have just a couple. Two point five. And some of these may just be questions. Um, an item may be removed from the agenda upon the affirmative vote of at least four commissioners. I was wondering why not a quorum? Versus four commissioners?
Call for super majority.
Is that, isn't that in Roberts rules or am I mistaken?
No.
No?
I don't, I don't know about Roberts, but yeah, the idea would be super majority. That's a five person board, so that's the.
Okay, four point three. Oh, all public hearings shall be advertised as required by the applicable Maryland law or town code section. Do we? Maybe it's in here. The requirements for public hearing.
Well, the reason that I kept it general like this is because sometimes the advertising requirement is slightly different depending on what particular town code section is calling for the public hearing or if it's a state law requirement. So rather than have, I, I just think keeping it general is, is the way to approach that, given the fact that there are mi- they are relatively minor, but there are some variations.
Uh, four point nine. Getting confused by the crossouts. Um, Commissioner may ask questions of any speaker at any time during the hearing. Any person may request a cross-examine, blah, blah, blah. Cross-examination shall be limited to questions pertaining to the speaker's testimony. What is my question? Any person may request to cross-examine another speaker at the end of the speaker's testimony by making a request to the president prior to the speaker's testimony. So if I want to cross-examine you, I have to request permission for, or request it from the president before you speak.
Correct.
But I don't know if I want to cross-examine you until I hear you speak.
Correct. But if you, if you think that you might potentially, you a- and if, if you say, I would like to cross-examine this person, the person testifies and you have no cross-examination questions, you, you don't have.
If I have no intention of cross-examining the speaker or the person giving testimony, no intention of cross-examining, so I don't make a request in advance to the president. But then you say something that I'm totally opposed to, so I do want to cross-examine you. Is it too late at that point to request permission?
Yes.
That doesn't make sense.
Can I ask a question as far as the definition of cross-examination? Does, I assume, like, to me, that's I don't know. Sounds more. Is it the same thing as asking a question, a general question?
Well, so it has to be limited to the testimony that was presented. So just because I, I stand up here, I testify about I'm bad at coming up with examples on the spot, but you can't, you can't cross-examine with some question out of left field that has absolutely nothing to do with the proceeding, what the person spoke to.
But if you wanted additional clarification on something they said, would that be considered?
Yes, yes, as long as, as long as the subject matter addresses something that was said, then yes.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
So a thought.
Sorry.
In the process, you're right, it's an added layer. I agree with you and it's sort of a frustrating added layer. But there's a means by which we can address it. It's basically, we can always say to the president, we'd like to reserve the right to cross-examine the individual. And if there's no need, then we rescind that option. The, the way I draw a parallel is that when community members come in to partake, participate in a meeting. Some will not just witness it and just see what happens and others want to give their opinion on a specific issue. And it's been my practice to say, even if you're not sure you want to talk, put your name on the list so that way you can reserve the right and you can step back from that reservation should you need to, should you want to. So you're never obligated to talk, but you always have the opportunity to talk. Because if you don't put your name down, then you lose that privilege in that moment or, or that, I don't know if it's a privilege, but um, you lose that opportunity. So we can just, you know, if we dance with the procedure, we just say, hey, I'd like to reserve the right. And in the context that it is a hearing, you know, there's a high probability that we will have questions because, you know, this is something that's weighty that requires a hearing. And therefore, it's something that we want to uh, you know, be prepared for, like, say, hey, you know what? I think I might ask that question.
I, I want to add a couple additional things. Um, first of all, I have an amendment to my own rule because um, the right to cross-examination only applies to quasi judicial hearings. It does not apply to legislative hearings. So something that I, I strongly recommend as an amendment that the board adopt is in four point nine at the beginning of the second sentence. During a quasi judicial hearing, comma, any person may, and carry on. Uh, and I would also say that this, the, the requirement that a person declare if they want the right to cross-examine someone, would, it wouldn't apply to the board. The board can ask questions whenever they want. Um, this is, you know, and, and again, this, it's not going to come up a ton in your context. There are very limited situations where you're going to be conducting a quasi judicial hearing. Um, I think it's really just floating zones and um, change and mistake math amendments. So this is, this is not a procedure that's going to be used very frequently. But this really would apply to the parties. And to the extent there are members of the public that wish to testify.
So for clarification sake, is this okay? For clarification sake, so in the second sentence, before it's modified, any person, so therefore, we're not talking about a board member, we're talking about anybody in the community.
Correct, yes. The, the first sentence, the commissioners may ask questions of any speaker at any time during the hearing.
So they're reserving that right, should they want it?
Right.
Great, okay, thank you.
So is there a place in the, in the script that we would have to allow for that?
Um, if you look at four point five, four point five sort of lays out the outline for how a, a hearing should be conducted.
So somewhere in here, the, the president should say, does anybody reserve the right?
Yes. Might even be for the sake of clarity, does, does anyone think that they might want to cross-examine this person? If so, please raise your hand.
And does anything official have to happen past the raising of the hand?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's really, it's not a, it's not a solemn, right? It's really just a, a way to sort of organize things and identify, okay, these are the people that are going to talk about this. Let's kind of line it up so we can keep things moving.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But they would have these sworn in already?
Yes.
But for the sake of clarity, is it okay?
Yeah.
For the sake of clarity, will they need to identify themselves before they cross-examine?
Yes.
And like we do now with public comment, we don't give a home address any longer. We identify whether they're a resident or not a resident. Would that also be something that would be obligated or just, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is to establish some relevance to the person's cross-examination.
Well, I don't I don't think that's required.
It's not required in the quasi judicial?
No.
Could we require?
Do you want to?
I kind of do. The reason I, I'd like people to I don't want to filter things. I want, I want a forum where people can weigh in, but at the same time, we do need to be accountable. So that's kind of my thing. I would hate to see somebody come in here and have an axe to grind on a personal issue not related to the topic. And it suddenly becomes a non topical issue as opposed to thing on, thing on the matter.
Well, if it becomes a non topical issue, you certainly have the discretion to shut that down. You, you can limit people and candidly, I think you might have the ability to do what you want to do, Commissioner O'Donnell. I'm not positive. And which is why I'm reluctant to
I'm, I'm just.
weigh in on that heavily. Um, but I mean, what you could do certainly is, um, to the extent that a person veers away from the grounds of reasonable cross, you can stop that. Um, and the commissioners can certainly ask them what, what's your interest in this?
So the redirection.
Yeah. Because, because again, the commissioners always have the, the authority to ask questions. So that includes cross-examiners.
Okay.
Commissioners? Any issue with um, adding the a little blurb at the beginning of the second sentence in four point nine?
No.
No? Okay. Any other comments, questions, suggestions, Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, I'm almost finished. Four point eleven, when we have a public hearing, do we generally, do we vote on the same evening? Or is the vote carried over like to the next meeting?
Generally, you do. Um, this is providing for a circumstance when maybe something comes up during the hearing and you want to keep the record open to receive additional comment or testimony. This gives you the option to do that. But my, at least in my experience with the town and the other towns that I've participated in, it, it typically does occur the same evening.
Because it, it says um, the public hearing, it, once the public hearing is closed, the record shall remain open for the length of time designated by the board to receive additional public comment. And then if we don't allow it to be open for a period of time, then we have to award an additional five minutes at the next public meeting. So under those circumstances, we couldn't vote the same night.
Correct, yes. If you're leaving the record open to receive additional information, you absolutely could not vote that night.
But it says we must or we shall.
If.
And the record shall remain open after the, so once the public hearing is closed, the record shall remain open. Let's say for twenty minutes. Before we can vote. If we close the record, once the public, once the public hearing is closed, if the record is not left open, then we have to give time at the next meeting. So
No.
It's written, we can't vote.
No, that's, I, I don't believe that's how it's written. Um, once all testimony has been received, the public hearing is closed and the record shall remain open only for the length of time designated by the board to receive additional public con- comment, if any. Okay, so you, you have the option to leave it open or leave it not to receive additional comment, to not receive additional comment. If the board does allow the record to remain open to receive additional public comment, the applicant shall be awarded an additional five minutes of rebuttal time. So if you leave the record open, then you have to give the applicant rebuttal time at the beginning of the next meeting. If you don't, then you can vote immediately.
Well, it says the record shall remain open. So do, are we required to leave the record open once the public hearing is closed?
No.
We do not. Okay, because it says, and the record shall remain open. So it may.
If, there's a, there's an if any at the end of that sentence. The record shall remain open only for the length of time designated by the board to receive additional public comment, if any. So if you don't designate any time, you, you can close the record.
You would have to make it, take an action to leave it open. You would have to make it, take an action to leave it open?
Correct.
You'd have to make a motion and make it an effort.
And designate how long?
I want it to stay open for an additional.
Yes.
One through a hundred days or whatever.
Right.
So if no, so if no such action was taken, it would close that night.
I, I guess I'm not understanding because it says if, if the additional public, if the board does not allow the record to remain, remain open.
It, it doesn't say not there. If the board does allow the record to remain open.
If the board does allow the record to remain open, so we can close it.
Yes.
We don't have to
Nope.
Leave it open, period.
It's going to, it's going to close unless you take an action to leave it open.
And stay it for how long?
Okay.
The two conditionals there gave us a lot of power.
I think the shall is throwing me off.
Got it.
Shall remain open.
Okay. But you have the conditional with the if any. So that's sort of your, your switch.
Um, and then five point seven, I don't know what that was. Nope, that's taken care of. Jim addressed that. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome. So I just jotted down a list of the amendments that it sounds like there's consensus for. With the exception of my Robert's rules proposal. So for ease of making this motion, what is the board's thought on my proposed revision to three point one one? Is that an amendment that the board would like to consider?
I say yes.
Other feedback from other commissioners, Commissioner Hoover is in agreement. Commissioner Sweeney is in, in agreement. Commissioner O'Donnell's in agreement. So that alone would carry then? Yes. So I'm assuming we are good with that then.
Okay. Then in that case, there's not any further comment or discussion. I can read my suggested motion for someone to make. That would include the various amendments that we just discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to repeat what you say?
I, I think that if I do this clearly enough, the person making the motion could incorporate what I say.
As presented. Thank you.
As, yes, uh, unless there's objection to that. But my suggestion would be, I move to adopt the revised Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure as presented with the following amendments. That section three point six be amended to remove the requirement that a commissioner leave the room if a conflict of interest exists. That section four point nine be amended to add the following language to the beginning of the second sentence. During a quasi judicial hearing. That section five point three be struck in its entirety. And that all remaining sections of section five be renumbered accordingly. That section five point four be amended to delete the sentence, the board need not prepare minutes for a workshop. That section five point six be amended to remove the requirement that a commissioner exit the meeting room. In the event a conflict or disqualification exists. Section five point seven, that the word shall, shall be changed to need. And finally, that section three point one one be struck in its entirety and replaced with the following provision. If a question of procedure arises, which these rules do not address, and a majority of commissioners cannot agree as to how the board should proceed, the most up to date version of Robert's Rules of Order shall control. That's, that's all I've got.
Anything missing? I just have one quick question as it regards to three point four, the meeting minutes, and this might be a moot point the way it's stated. Because it does say, board shall keep a true and accurate record of all proceedings, blah, blah, blah. The meeting shall include one, two, three. The way I read that, we could still.
Yes. My, my position would be this is no limitation on the subsequent conversation you want to have about what minutes include. This is just
Like the bare bones.
Yes.
And then we could.
You gotta do this. If you agree that you want to include more,
Gotcha.
No need to revisit this.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adopt the updated rules? Revised, adopt the revised rules of procedures for the Board of Commissioner meetings to include provisions for closed meetings, workshop, et cetera, with the, as presented with following amendments, following amendments as presented. I don't know.
Clear enough for you?
It, it's fine with me. If it's fine with you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Hoover, did you use a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, very good. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All against, please say nay. Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on. Uh, agenda item number two for consideration, setting priorities for the town. Mr. Mayor, um, we'll turn to you.
Um, I thought it was real important that, um, as we were doing the comprehensive plan, that we also have, um, a set of tasks and, um, projects that, uh, that we all have input to. I don't think the commissioners have ever really had that opportunity to bring their ideas to be part of the, of our plan, uh, moving forward. And I wanted to at least hit the bare bones tonight and let everyone have the opportunity to present what their, their projects are. And we'll get them on a list. Not that we're going to take any action on anything tonight, but at least we can get a list made. Uh, we can take them home. It seems like I'm giving you homework almost every meeting now. And we can try to prioritize and, uh, put the, the projects into uh, needs and wants. Because there, there could become a time where we have some money to do some of the, of the, of the wants. And we can work off that list and have it established. So we can, we can get moving on things like that. So that was my hope. Well, I guess we'll, we'll see how it goes. I hope it doesn't get a flat tire right out of the gate. So.
Since we were tasked as a council to come with our priorities, um, what I'm thinking is before we categorize them into needs and wants, we can just list everything out. Short little description and not going through it in detail per se, but just enough to give the idea. And then once we have the full list and everybody's ideas, then we would decide as a group, what would go into priority, you know, wants or needs. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah. And you can, you can decide whether you want to do it tonight or whether you want to take, take it home and
Okay.
You know, and, and look at it for a while and then
Think about it.
Come back with you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, so at this time, we can, does anybody like to start the conversation with priorities for consideration?
I could, I guess I could do one. I think our infrastructure should be our main priority, getting up to speed and get our, our, what we need fixed, fixed. Um, like, um, westbound one forty, the new water line. The water line coming down from the reservoir should be one of our main priorities. Cause if we have a main break up there, we have no water because we can't use the mount. So we have no water at all. So we should concentrate on, on the water line, getting a, the water line fixed on the mountain if we can. DePaul Street's coming out on bid. So that was, that's going to be fixed. I think, um, North Seaton needs finished or done, which I think comes out on business. Are correct. Kathy? Right. Catching up and getting our sewer relined along the, um, flat run. Cause that's where all of our, our wild water is coming in that most of the time from when the creek floods. So I, I, I would concentrate my, my priorities on the sewer water we have, trying to get them up, up to where they need to belong.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sweeney, looking at the list up there, does that accurately summarize what you had in mind?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else do their homework? Want to go next?
I have water and I'm, I'm not part of the board, but I do have water and sewer infrastructure projects listed on my list as well that I could add to Commissioner Sweeney's, um, if it's appropriate.
That's wrong.
No, I, I'm, I'm asking if it's appropriate. If it's not.
Um, yeah. You, you mean.
So I have some infrastructure projects. Obviously, um, I have the, you know, I'll type it all out, but the management and completion of the pump, uh, the pump station. Um, management and completion of the DePaul Street Water Line. Um, management and completion of the DePaul Street Water Line. Uh, management and completion of North Seaton Avenue Water Line and Green Street Project. And then the new, the investigating the water line down the mountain from the reservoir. Where the water infrastructure projects that I had as well as the sewer relining. You don't have to type out all the management and completion things. You can just list the projects if you want. That was just for mine. No.
Um, Ms. Will, it's, I might have, I might have, um, misheard you. Did you say the, the Paul Water Line twice? I, I'm not sure. I'm so tired. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hoover?
Yep. So I took this as a, what we originally talked about was a projects and priorities. So it took us two different things. So one of the things where you're talking about projects, I know Emmett Ridge entrance, Emmett Ridge development is coming, coming, coming up. And I want to make sure that priority is that phase one of that project this time stays as the entrance to that project, the, um, Irish Town Route. I think that was probably the failing portion of that project last time, not making the entrance to priority. Um, but also as priorities, I wanted to look at, I definitely want to look at the water rates again. And probably just as important or more importantly, I want to look at water capacity. I'm concerned that your capacity may be a problem, but I may be wrong. I'm not sure. And then also revisit the, um, the tap fee structure.
Anything else?
That's all good.
Okay. We okay, um, Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Turnquist?
So I have kind of projects and then kind of other things that have come from like citizens or businesses. I'll just start at the top of the list. Um, review and update our charter and code. Update our community legacy facade grant for FY twenty five to include a separate grant application process for businesses and considering low income families. Um, we need to update our code to fill vacant commissioner positions.
Commissioner Turnquist, can I have you slow down just a little so she can keep up?
I can give you my list when we're done. Uh, dark skies committee. Uh, utilizing MS teams. Or maybe our agenda items, more packets. Save a few trees. Um, website updates in the future. If we could start our budget review process earlier in the year. Tap fees are mentioned. Um, vacant buildings on Main Street. How do we attract new businesses and provide incentives for such? Moving forward with Maryland Main Street. Um, just talking about our town alert system and how Emmitsburg is using the system to notify residents. Um, there was a request to change the Citizens Advisory Committee name to Citizens and Business Advisory Committee. A resident had asked about making use of the glass panes in front of the deputy building. And maybe we are.
What do you, what do you mean by that? Can I ask? I'm sorry.
I, I think there's a board outside the deputy office where we can post town events.
Oh.
Utilizing that?
Oh, you mean the bulletin board?
Board. Okay. We are. Okay. Um, the storm water management utility fee, how will impervious surface be measured? I think we should talk about that a little bit before that goes into effect. Maybe a discussion on future developments and proposed annexations. Um, I think it was already mentioned, but the water and sewer infrastructure, our wells, plants, capacities, usage over time, age, condition, production, consumption, storage facilities, lagoons, et cetera. You can just put infrastructure. Identify our ongoing water and sewer contracts. Beef up our water and sewer report. So we have more information. Expand our monthly treasurer's report, which is kind of in the works. Jim had mentioned at another meeting, looking at the duties for each position.
I didn't mention.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mention that.
Yeah, at a prior meeting.
I think we did discuss it at some point.
And I don't just, it's a whole lot of random things that maybe we could talk about at some point if we agree that it's important. Uh, a few things from citizens, a crossing guard at Emmitsburg Elementary.
At what location? Cause this, they're one. At what location? Because this, they're one right now by the laundry mat, correct? South Seaton, yes, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
There it did. There's a lot of traffic congestion there when school lets out.
Basically staffing cuts, they didn't have a person.
Did they have two before and they cut it to one?
Yeah, they used to have the one at, um, Lincoln and South Seaton, and then the one at the laundry mat as well.
Um, amend the ordinance to allow non-residents to be on our committees. Affordable housing. As it relates to, um, proposed developments. Senior housing. Childcare. Um, community policing. I know it's on our website, a partnership exists between law enforcement and the community, but maybe our deputy could give a presentation. On that and what that entails. Um, and then last but not least, we should, um. Review our comp plan updates to like prioritize into this list.
Yeah, I think this, this will be a working document, so we can, we can add anytime. It's great.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Turnquist, was that? Are you good? Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thanks. So I'm in the classroom a lot, so some of this is redundant, so it's repetitive versus additive, but, uh, it's aligned, so staff. Don't feel as if maybe you have to retype. Redundant items, I hope. Um, first and foremost, the town meets its obligations. Okay, that's sort of the blanket statement, and we do, but that's as, as our first priority. Next, I would argue that it would be the water line from the mountain, making sure that that is replaced. And providing water as necessary for the community. Next, the North Seaton Avenue flooding issue is further addressed. I know that the sentiment is that the North Seaton revision will help that, but I think there are more steps that are going to have to follow. To be certain that we're addressing the flooding issue there, uh, and coattailing on that is. The second access point, which I believe is what Mr. Hoover mentioned with the Emmett Ridge Access, right? Okay, to Irish Town Road, um, and absolutely sticking to our guns on that one as a non-negotiable, but, uh, required item. Um, moving from there, housing redundant, but, uh, looking at that notion of workforce housing for our young people. The idea that if one has a reliable income, is committed to their employment, they have the means of a reasonable costing entry level home. And that's a really hard one, because the market tends to dictate that, so I don't know how we frame that, but if, if there's a means by which we can do that, that would be good. Um, it would be excellent. Um, parking near the square, uh, I think we need to have, uh, a serious look at our parking plan. I'm not talking about meters, I'm talking about a super view of the retail that we want to see on Main Street. The Main Street is the heartbeat of our community. Um, we certainly are going to see more retail on the other side of the highway, that seems inevitable, but we don't want to lose retail on Main Street. And parking is part of that equation. Moving from there, um, encouraging the county to replace the Emmitsburg Elementary School. Uh, I will echo something Commissioner Burns said, that it is not ours to do, but maybe we can expedite the process. It's on a replacement cycle way out there, so if we can make it a better school for our young people, we should. As always, near and dear to my heart, the expansion of trails in the community, uh, I would like to have the opportunity to see trails. On the Scott Road Farm, specifically, uh, what are called adaptive trails, and they are inclusive. And the reason I say that is a lot of our veterans want to do the bike thing, but they need our, what are called adaptive bikes. And if we can do that, uh, it would be glorious, but also selfishly, there's money there. There are a lot of entities, private and public, who want to be involved in that, who will help fund that. Um, moving from there, encouraging childcare centers coming into the community, there's an absolute need for childcare centers. Um, we have many working moms who are going very far from here to do what they have to do, uh, for their young people. And to work for their households. Um, moving from there. Main Street, Maryland, to echo what we've heard already from Commissioner Turnquist, absolute commit to the idea that it is a non-government organization. But we fund it for the betterment of our community, and we view it as a quality of life enhancer. Um, not necessarily a nice to have, but a need to have. I think it would benefit our community and especially our businesses. Align with that, business development, where we actually send representatives from the community to retail conventions. To target retailers, we would like to see here, or these types of retailers here, where they attend these events and they present the town. And our retail shed, so folks have an idea of what we can do for them, and we know hopefully what they could do for us. Um, and I would argue the biggest, and again echoing, the most important priority is our water and sewer infrastructure. And the funding for that, so. Uh, I'm sorry if it was redundant, but that's where I am, and yes, I did say trails, I am, you know, so, for what it's worth. Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
I think it's okay to be redundant, because it gives us everybody an idea of where everyone's coming from on the council. Having said that, I could completely use the same disclaimer that Commissioner O'Donnell said, is some of this will be redundant, so don't feel like. Having to note it again. Um, I had some similar ones, uh, starting with infrastructure, with water lines, capacity, tap fees. So obviously, infrastructure is a big one, even looking at something as simple as, can we get a green turn arrow at the, at the square? Can we relook at that? I know we've been shut down before, but maybe if we keep asking. And also. How to look at crosswalk safety, especially right there in front of the town office. Because of that extra turn lane, it does get tricky when one car stops, but another one can go through the turn lane and go around. I also had, I did have schools on the list, I know, uh, Ms. Willetts and I had, had a conversation with FCPS a while ago. And when you say Commissioner O'Donnell, that it's way down there, I don't even know if it's a twinkle in their eye at this point. So I do think it needs, we need to be vocal about school improvements, and if we can't get a replacement school, which I understand. Comes down to lack of space, they needed so many acres, and we, they don't have it to, in that particular section. Uh, so even if they wanted to build a new school or replace the school, they would have to look at another piece of land. In the meantime, is it possible to at least get walls up in our school, you know? Um, especially with safety. Uh, open schools just are not the best with today's times, with all the reports of active shooting and such. So if we can continue to make our schools safe, I think is incredibly important. Along with that is. Uh, daycare. Yeah, we want to keep our pre-K here at, in Emmitsburg, it's. It's something that we can't take for granted, and if we can't fill the seats of those pre-K spots here in Emmitsburg, we're going to lose it. Um, and in order to fill those pre-K spots, we need daycare, so that goes into the daycare issue already. Um, again, I had budget review down, is there a, a more effective way for us to use the, the money? Is there any creative ideas out there? I know our new accountant was looking to dig her teeth into some creative problem solving. If it requires a change in practice, and if so, will that practice also benefit the water fund? One can only wish on that. Also, looking at. Job descriptions and duties, can we make use of department heads with our, our town staff? How can we maximize the potential, because we do have a large workload, so. What does that look like, and can things be tweaked to alleviate that? Next, our, um. I also had water rates and tap fees, it's already been said, also wanted to look at. Tweaking the minutes and the agendas to give more communication ahead of time. As far as what's included in the agenda packets, uh, what's posted online. The time in which we've received those agenda packets, so that. Um, we have adequate time to digest. I had Cedar Avenue and South Seaton flooding, um, as well, since we had a recent water rescue. I know that's been an issue since the sidewalk went in, and farmer's market promotion, I have. And. Senior housing, senior housing and daycare for me go hand in hand, ideally, I would, it would be great to see daycare. And senior housing being close together, because there's so much research to show that those two. Groups can really benefit each other. So I have, if you have a daycare within a senior housing development, and they can have a common area where they can. Have activities that benefits both, both parties. And that is it. No, Jim, Jim already went. Yeah, he had a, he had a very, like, three items, four items, very concise. So that puts us at three, four pages.
May I add a few that, uh, projects that are MDE requirements, that's going to take up some staff time? Um, the first one would be the lead line service inventory, which is an MDE requirement that is due in. I think it's October of this year, and then, um, something that'll be coming to the board in the near future. Uh, will be the Emmitsburg Dam Inspection and Engineer, that is a, uh, MDE requirement. We're going to have to replace the catwalk to the valve house at the lake, as well as replace the grates at the spillway. At the Emmitsburg Dam, plus whatever else the engineer comes up with. Those are two MDE mandates that's required unfunded.
And the dam inspection is, is relatively new that we.
Yeah, that, um, there was that, just a couple of weeks ago, we got.
Yeah, I just got it last week.
Yeah, okay.
So we put a bid out, uh, an RFP out for an engineer, and I think that will come to the board in April.
Okay, and just to clarify, and the lead lined line inventory, is that the one? That we were talking about, that like, how would we even go about figuring out how to do that?
Right, the MDE requirement is that, that municipalities are required to identify all the town owned lines and service lines. Uh, what material makes up that line, when it was put in, how do you verify what it is, whether it's through plans or deeds? And things like that, so, uh, staff's taken a few trainings on that, and, um, that's something that's going to be. It's going to be time consuming.
On that note, there, well, back there was a detailed, the, um, inventory of, of the infrastructure. Does that, when we came up with the store and water enterprise, so there may, I don't know, but there may be something in there for you.
Okay, thank you.
May. I don't know that we went into detail of what type of line it was, or what it had or not, but.
Okay, yeah, I will look for that, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, should we? We still have a, a close, we still have setting agenda in closed session. Commissioners, do you want time to digest and come back with some top priorities? Uh, there is a lot, so I think in order to wade through it, it would take. I personally would, would like some time to digest, so I can consider everything on the list.
Yeah, there are several things on there that, um, I think we can kind of address and let you know where we are with those now, if that would help too. So that'll give us some time to, um, to get your comments on the stuff.
Sure.
Okay.
If I, for the comp plan, I know that's up there already, the goal with staff is to have it out for public comment review. By June of this year. And I know Commissioner Turnquist, you know, sits on the planning commission, has been involved in those, so that's a very lengthy document. That Najia has been working on.
Do we want to, um, you know, ha- have a workshop each month and start tackling some of this after we prioritize it? Or? I mean, how do we move forward, so we just don't get stuck in a bottleneck?
I don't, I don't personally see how we could tackle this at one meeting a month. I'm in favor of keeping workshops. Where we can have open discussion on how to tackle some of this.
Yeah, maybe now that we have, you have the list, that you can start to prioritize in your mind, and then we can.
Right.
Kind of. Make our master list off of how the priorities come up. So, you know, what if somebody has a number one, and everybody else has it at twenty, or maybe sixty-four?
All follows have a direct number one. So if we get a, um, list, if we can get that list, and have that, and then maybe at each meeting. What's the next two or three or four, whatever topics for the following month? Maybe that's.
And on Thursday, I will try to, um, to, to address some of those things, I might be a little late getting your update out to you this Thursday, but.
Okay.
I'll get you, uh, I'll try to address some of those that we do know that what's going on with them.
Okay.
Trying to hit the ones that are time sensitive first, and tackle them, tackle them one by one.
Yeah, because it, it looks like we could have an extra three hundred and fifty thousand in the ARPA money, so we're going to have to. Get some projects for, for that, but that's very limited on what we can use it for, but it's still an opportunity, we don't want to give any of that back.
Absolutely.
Would it be useful if we each sent you our list, or do you think you captured it all? I wasn't watching you type. Okay.
Okay, will you send us a, a copy so we can, okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing is we want time to digest, and maybe we can come back at the. March meeting with some priorities for, that we might want to tackle at a March workshop? No, yes?
I would agree.
Yes. I don't think we set a March workshop, did we?
We have not.
So if we decide we want to move forward with a March workshop, potentially, we can choose a date now. If that works.
I'm sorry, I, I did step out, um, there for a second to grab another list that I had, and you all covered it very well. Did anybody bring up, uh, additional staff?
No, but we did, I did mention, um, I think Commissioner Turnquist did too, job descriptions and duties. Looking at, um. The responsibilities, do, can we shift some of those around, uh, to maximize our department heads? And I think based off of that, we would have to. I see that as personally, I'm open to feedback, two steps, looking to see, does, do things currently need to be shifted? From one. Job description to another, and then, once we're fully staffed. Coming back to that and looking at what the workflow looks like once we're fully staffed, you know? Yeah, but I'm, I'm open.
Yeah, because my, my, the whole thing is, uh, every month, you all ask for more stuff that we want to give to you. We're just maxed out, the, the pump can't pump any more water, but we, but we want to be able to get you what you need. To still be able to make the good decisions and, and what have you, so, um. Just keeping that in mind, that's all.
Um, Commissioners, thoughts on that? Does that sound like acceptable?
Are you looking for a date?
Oh, no, I was just asking if, when he asked about additional staff, if it made sense to.
Absolutely.
View what we currently have and the duties, um, and then revisit. view what we currently have and the duties and then revisit when we're fully staffed.
Well, we're down one, I think we're down one position that we used to have. We're down one position we used to have. That was, we got money for that at one time. I don't know, it was not the town planner, but did we get that?
Zoning technician.
Zoning technician?
Yeah, zoning tech.
We used to get monies for the planner too, that way. We used to get some kind of money for the planner.
You, you, you did, just like we get for a police or whatever, so overlap of services with Frederick County, but Frederick County does not do planning services for us anymore.
Correct.
Each of us probably is on the run for that now.
Kind of like those unfunded mandates that come down. Okay. So Mayor Davis, I do think that's something we need to keep an eye on, his workloads and, and staff and, and watching how that unfolds. Ms. Willetts, as far as a, a March workshop date, we're meeting on March fourth. So would Monday, March eighteenth be a possibility?
I believe so. I know right now, excuse me, there is an economic development public workshop for the comp plan on March twenty-fifth. The eighteenth is open as of now, provided there's no additional comp plan meetings.
Is there a possibility that another one would pop up if needed?
It's possible. There's a few feelers out there with people that might submit some plans and things. But I don't know. If that, I would imagine March probably would, because we did have one that was supposed to come in the planning commission in February and they had to table it because there were a lot of comments.
Is the planning commission on the third Monday of the month?
Normally it's the fourth Monday.
Fourth, okay.
Yes.
Been moved around.
Right.
So it won't be on the eighteenth, okay.
Right, it's been moved around because of the
Workshop.
Yes.
Pretty eighteenth, at least tentative and
Yeah, we can do eighteenth as tentative and then if for some reason that pops up, do you want to look at the nineteenth? No, no, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I can't do the nineteenth.
You could look at the eleventh, which just would be the following week.
Okay, so we'll put the eighteenth now on the eleventh as backup if needed. Okay. All right. At this time, I, for setting the agenda for March fourth, it hasn't changed since the last time we met. But I believe there was a modification to the agenda.
Yes. Staff and the mayor would like to withdraw agenda item number six, which would be for consideration approval need, needed to add change or approval of change order for the pump station. We no longer need that agenda item.
Is that a good thing, I hope?
Yes, that is a good thing.
Cool.
No change order done?
No change order. Well, there is a change order, but it's significantly lower than what we expected.
That's great.
Was this due to that dying, yes, yes, concrete monsters?
As a matter of fact, we think that's been removed, so we're real anxious for this two inches of rain tonight to see if it helps at the sewer plant.
Commissioners, any need for Ms. Willetts to review the agenda items that were already set for March at the last meeting?
Repeat that?
Do you, would you like her to, there's, the only change to the March agenda was the withdrawing number, item number six. Is there any need for her to repeat and review the other ones? Are we good?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so at this time. Okay, so we now turn to our, oh no, do we have to accept the agenda? No.
Remember it is.
All right, we now turn to our final agenda item. The mayor and the board of commissioners intend to meet in a closed session to discuss the appointment of an applicant for the position of code, parking code enforcement officer. This is the final agenda item and the board of commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. Pursuant to Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article three dash three oh five D. Prior to closing the meeting, the commissioners must conduct a recorded vote to close the meeting and make a written statement of reason for closing the meeting, including a citation of authority for closing the meeting under Maryland Code annotated general provision provisions, Article three dash three oh five B and a listing of topics to be discussed. I will now read the proposed closing statement, which has been prepared by staff. The topic to be discussed during the closed meeting will be the appointment of the applicant to the position of parking code enforcement officer. The authority for the meeting in closed session for this purpose is Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article three dash three oh five B one, which authorizes the board of commissioners to meet in a closed session to quote, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance valuation of appoint, appointees, employees or official over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, end quote. Additional authority to close the meeting exists under Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article three dash three oh five B thirteen, which authorizes the board of commissioners to meet in closed session to quote, comply with specific constitutional, statutory or judicially imposed requirement that prevents public disclosures about a particular proceeding or matter. The reason for closing the session is that the public discussion of the applicant's names and job information could discourage people from applying for town jobs. Furthermore, involving the applicant's application materials, including letters of reference, is protected from disclosure pursuant to the Maryland Public Information Act, M D Code Annotated General Provisions Article four dash three ten and four dash three eleven. Do I hear a motion to adopt the closing statement as read and to enter a closed meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. So we are now entering the closed session.